All right, we will start the North Canton Plan Commission Meeting on November 6, 2019. Can I have the formal order?
Mr. Sarah.
Present.
Mr. Duffase.
Present.
Mr. McLeister.
Here.
Mr. Blackner. Mr. Volos.
Here.
Okay, first order of business tonight will be to, um, to review the October 2, Plan Commission Meeting of 2019. Do I have a motion to accept?
I move to accept the answer as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Sarah.
Yes.
Mr. McLeister.
Yes.
Mr. Duffase.
Yes.
Mr. Volos.
Yes.
Okay, tonight we have an adjunction hearing. It's application number 19 MCBPC dash 00014. It's a conditional use permit for an indoor recreation facility to include an interior buildout of tenant suite for the use of an indoor baseball softball skills development field. And will be located at 339 East Maple Street. Uh, this is a mixed-use overlay. If anyone speaks, we need to have them sworn in, right?
Correct.
So we want to do it individually or as a whole?
As a whole.
So if anyone wants to speak tonight, uh, please stand and you'll be sworn in.
I raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're going to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. So we have someone from, um, from the developer, the architect, or the owner present tonight. Can you come to the podium and state your name and address?
My home address is 1010 Berman Road, Akron.
Okay, and?
And I'm Brian Grafton, FND Architects, and my address is 2841, with the average address in favor.
Thank you. Can you explain what you're, what you're looking at in that facility?
Well, the idea of it is a very fast-growing franchise in, for training children on batting, pitching, catching. And basically, our clientele is eight to 12 years old, and they come with their parents. We intend to, uh, be pretty busy here with this case well, to know that we're in Ohio, and we train with the children, and mostly we have, we have some high school, but there are a few, most of them at age group. And the busiest times would be after 4:30 at night until nine, and then Saturdays and Sundays.
And just a brief note on architecture as well. Um, so we are going into the existing suite on the second floor of 339 Maple Street. Um, we've got, uh, pretty much no exterior except for one wall, and it'll be solid. Um, and it is an existing tenant suite that the landlord is providing, so a lot of the HDC lighting, things of that nature all fall under that category as far as questions in that line.
And I don't need that. The company has 55 locations, beginning last year, they've opened 30 new studios, 90 now, and 41 are waiting to open. It's been a very parting thing among the schools, and we're dealing closely with coaches near the schools, you know, to, to know about presence and what we do.
Okay, thank you. Um, Marty, was there anything that you saw in the, in their proposal?
Yes, thank you. Staff and me with the applicant design team.
Can you talk louder?
Yeah, that mic's not on.
Should I sit down or do you want to stay here?
How about that?
Why don't you stay for a little while?
Okay. Staff and me with the applicant design team were making application and sort of the ordinance. Uh, the project, as we understood, included some, or an option to do birthday parties in there. That's why we're here tonight. Uh, the, the property is zoned, limited industrial with mixed-use overlay. If we did not incorporate the party, the birthday party option into the project, it would be an outright permitted use with the party option in there. It's a conditional use under the mixed-use overlay.
The, uh, as far, as far as the birthday parties, it's usually about 15 children. Uh, you may, you can advance, we bring in pizza for, uh, nothing's, you know, the center.
Nothing is what? I can't hear.
Nothing's prepared at the evening office, so, and as I say, we bring in pizza and the birthday cake for the birthday, and music people attend with a parent. Uh, maybe 15, and, uh, they pay for that, and usually they coach. We have coaches that teach the children, and if a particular person is coming to his birthday, his coach will be there. And those usually help, uh, staff and us on that.
So the birthday parties would be held, what, like in a lounge area?
We have, we have a two-bedroom party room that's, uh, that's about 18 by 24, a party center. And basically, that's used for birthdays and meetings for, for, for staff, the, the children, the, the trans make room, because they play against another, another group from another school.
Okay, I, based on the drawing now, it's, it's actually, label is, party room number 106, I'm drawing there.
So the only concern that we discussed in the pre-op, excuse me, pre-application meeting was, uh, the compatibility of the existing uses there.
I can't hear you, Marty, that, the what?
Sorry about that. The compatibility of the existing uses. Got to be real close to this microphone. Uh, and the architect responded, I believe it was the architect correctly, but it wasn't. Somebody responded from the applicant design team side that the layout of the floor plan was purposeful in providing a buffer for mitigating that sound for the adjacent tenant, uh, BWC, the Bureau of Workers' Compensation. So provided that's addressed, uh, staff representatives approve.
What's addressed? I, I can't hear any of that.
The sound mitigation.
Okay.
From the sounds, you know, noise, potential noises produced from the proposed use, whether it be from music or, you know, the bat hitting the ball.
Yeah, you know, you know, it was really getting the bat hitting the wall, and all the walls will be insulated and soundproofed. And, you know, we've got a 25-foot ceiling, and basically, you know, the, the noises absorb into the location. We don't anticipate any problems with any attendance.
We'd also like to note, um, on the eastern side of the party room of this entire space, there is a fire corridor separating the DBAT tenant suite from the, uh, the adjacent, uh,
The P, yeah, the additional.
So there is some additional space. It's not a, a shared common wall between the two spaces either, so we took that into consideration as well when we put it in.
And half of it is manufacturing. But, but, uh, this small office there.
Did the fire department review this?
Fire department has reviewed. I normally have a letter from them, but I don't now want to. So the fire department, I think, blocked the project, I believe, after the application meeting, I left them to it.
Are they comfortable with the means of egress out?
They are. We, we did block the existing means of egress as far as that law through, uh, projects. From a code standpoint, it's fairly straightforward. Uh, let me clarify, building code, we're talking a couple different codes here, so from a building code standpoint, it's straightforward. From the zoning code, still fairly straightforward, except it requires a conditional use permit on the recent floor to that suite.
And, and we are on the second floor, I don't know if we have a master.
Let's see that again.
Yeah, we are on the second floor. We, we go to the second floor.
Questions from the commission?
I guess I do have a question. So you mentioned that there will be insulation with the walls, uh?
Yeah, they, they're gonna, the walls are cheap up, so, you know, it's, it's not the end.
So is it just standard insulation, or are these insulated more for the sound? I guess I was just, and I realize, and thank you for providing the time, so, you know, generally after 4:30, you know, the weekends, but, um, so there, you don't anticipate any disturbance with the, the offices that are there, with the noise coming?
It's minimum offices. It's ma, most of the building is manufacturing, except the front house and all.
Right. You guys have got the Bureau, or the BWC, don't you?
You what?
Don't you have the Bureau of Workers' Compensation?
Yes, we have, since then.
Okay.
But there's a long way to go, yes, and, uh, so not directly.
It would be R13 bat insulation friction fit between the three and five-eighths and studs. It'll be three and five-eighths studs with R13 bat insulation friction fit between, uh, we have all office walls, not just immediate buddy walls between DBATs and these.
Time, Jimmy, you done?
Yeah.
You mentioned that this is a franchise?
Yes, yes.
Uh, opportunity for you. Do you run this business anywhere else in Northeast Ohio?
I basically had, uh, the largest drugstore. I, I was in there for 41 years. Uh, I had, said, you know, 350 million on one location.
I can hear you.
I had a facility, a pharmacy, that did 350 million in one location. But it didn't need the part of it, and I also have a planet fitness franchise. See, I own the franchise rights for Charlotte, North Carolina, and how I have this facility is 20, 25,000 square feet.
Okay, so I had a little bit of a hard time hearing. Do you have this business anywhere else?
No.
So this is your first?
That's correct. It's very similar to Planet Fitness.
With this company?
That's correct.
In your business plan, how much of your business is predicated upon doing private parties versus?
You know, that, that may be 10 years. Basically, the birthday party is just something we are, for the members, for the kids, okay? Uh, and, you know, they're gonna be between eight and 12 years old.
So.
Because they're usually, you know, on weekends.
And so just so I understand, um, Marty, you, the conditional use is for the private parties, not for the primary use, which is batting cages. That conforms, right?
Thus, exactly.
Okay. I have no further questions at this time. Anyone else from the commission? Anyone?
I, I think one of the benefits that you have in situations where the, your landlord is the same landlord of those that would share the facility, that when you, typically when you have that situation, if there's, uh, you know, something that, if there was a complaint about the, the noise, each of you are, are dealing with the, the same group of people, and it tends to resolve rather quickly instead of having a downside as the go which went.
Basically, on the bodies, that'll be about 2 or 3% of our revenue. It's not a big thing. It's just, kind of, it's like, for the kids, you know, we get together, we get the children in the area, to see the schools, other schools.
Yes.
I, I walked the site today with the landlord representative and looked at the area where they're lying, and, yeah, they assured me that the way that you're designing it with the, kind of like the party room and offices separating the tenant, is going to muffle the sound with the other tenants. So they felt very comfortable, landlord representative felt very comfortable that it's not going to be an issue.
And if you look, if you look at the plan, the party room is very small. This could be the opening of a facility. And it's tucked in with our offices, you know, our head office, and the other two rooms are other offices. So it's really in that, you know, it's, it's nice, it's not going to, you can get into the head.
And to clarify your question, Richard Holmes, the batting cages used for professional training is a performing use for the limited industrial. It's the party type of function, falls under the mixed-use or, except for, as the condition goes.
So Marty, the athletic training falls in, it's just a party use?
Right.
I mean, basically, we, you know, they say athletic training, it's really for children. You know, it's not for adults, and that's very few people, and it's basically children eight to 12, and that's, you know, it would be very difficult to say that. Everybody wants to be a baseball star, you know, to, 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 to.
Are there any representatives from the landlord or the adjacent tenants in the audience? Is there anyone from the public who wants to speak on this? Approach podium and, uh, state your name and address, please.
Sit down.
Yes, please, thank you.
Chuck Osborne, 307 February Street, southeast of North Canton, Ohio. It sounds like this is going to be a done deal. I see they've gone to considerable expense on all drawings and everything, and I sympathize with them. Uh, upon hearing of this, uh, the last two days, I went to, uh, a local competitor. For one thing, this is a, obviously a very competitive field. There's a DBAT located in, uh, oh goodness.
So?
So, yes, thank you. Uh, I did look at her website. I, there's actually a, uh, similar use facility up on Apple Grove, near the, uh, sheets up there, called Velocity. And I went into the facility last night, and I was stayed six, eight minutes. You ever hear of 100 mile an hour baseball off of a aluminum bat? It's like a gunshot. I couldn't even stay in there. Uh, if all they're putting in is just regular residential with two-by-four studs with just insulation, uh, I predict you're going to have noise issues. Uh, I would think you need to put in some substantial soundproofing. I don't know what this does, uh, to the rest of the, uh, surrounding spaces. Uh, I did talk to Bureau Workers' Comp today, and they're expressing sympathy to whoever eventually leases the place below them. So, uh, our goal here is to protect not only, uh, what property rights in general, uh, maintain property values, and also, you know, the surrender to enjoy a property, and we normally think of that in terms of residential, but also business needs to be protected as well. So they're not a problem. And, uh, Workers' Comp also told me today that they had noise issues with the, uh, uh, industrial activity on the northeast corner. Uh, I just can't imagine what this is going to be. You're sitting there quiet at your desk trying to focus and concentrate, and this is going on. That's my number one concern, is protecting, uh, the fellow tenants, and, uh, like Mr. Sarah, I think, wrote out, you would think the landlord would make sure it's not going to disturb his fellow tenants. Uh, that's to be seen in the future. Secondly, is safety. You've got kids running back and forth across East Maple there. So those are my two concerns. A few parties a year doesn't change this. It's, it's the, the nature of the whole mix. You're just kind of put dozens of different uses in the same bag of tricks here, and, I can only equate it to Bitzer Park right there, where we've got memorials and, uh, military memorials, and now they're helping put it on, uh, amphitheater. How many uses can you pile on top of each other? So anyway, I'm concerned about, uh, if the landlord, and, and the problem here is, once this is in, it's in. You start finding out you have noise issues. So I would think you would be proactive here and be especially attuned to possible noise issues. Uh, I don't know what your proposed lease is.
I will gladly answer those questions, my friend.
I don't know, how many years you're, you're on board here, but, anyway, that's it. Thank you.
If I can respond, um, because this is an adjudication hearing, those that are speaking
Mr. Fox, I can figure this out.
For the offer of evidence, and, uh?
They can offer evidence.
They're here to offer evidence for the board to, uh, consider this application. Uh, it's clear that Mr. Osborne does not speak on behalf of Bureau Workers' Comp.
I never replied there.
For the landlord, so I, I would caution the board to, um, look at that, that if the representatives, uh, with knowledge of tonight's hearing have presented themselves and offered, uh, their own, uh, concerns, that someone on, uh, leave on their behalf and just, uh, take that as the weight of, uh, what's, what's being offered.
Well, correct, and we have orders on nuisance, but that pertains to neighborhood, not to a big development.
That, that's correct. Normally, as I had mentioned, when you have a, this type of scenario with a multi-tenant lease, that, that's something that you have the ability to go straight to your landlord. If your landlord can't remedy with that with you, normally there's the ability, uh, to, remove yourself from, from the lease or, uh, seek some type of, of, of type of remedy from your, from your landlord.
Right. Yes, anyone else in the audience who would care to speak? Uh, go ahead.
Who can speak?
Come on, let me jump in with that.
So I just wanted to speak with, uh?
Can I get your name, please?
David Leach.
Okay, spell the last name.
L-E-A-C-H, the Corners Company, um, 3200 West Market Street, Akron, Ohio. We're the, we're the builders for the project, and I just wanted to, uh, just maybe briefly speak a little bit on the, the sound question. Um, if you go to the, the drawing up above, um, these are all cage nets, so these balls are not going to be hitting walls, they're going to be hitting nets. So there will be impact from the balls on the bats. Um, all the floors are going to, in those areas are going to be a turf product that's sound deadening, and also rubber floors in on either walkways, which is also sound deadening. So we're taking great care to kind of to, to make sure that we are sensitive to the surrounding tenants at all, and that's something that was discussed with the landlord previously.
Thank you.
Can I answer a couple questions?
Sure.
You know, one, one thing first, that basically the community of the DBAT has one in, I don't, recently, it's for a year, and, uh, it's an asset to the community. Be giving a very safe place for children to go and spend time. Uh, it's, they'll be going to the boys' club, or the girls' club, or something like that. It's very safe. And as far as, as the construction, we intend to spend almost a million dollars in equipment, noise, they, 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 it's a design, so we really feel confident that it's going to be a success, it's a community, you know, so we can help the children, a safe place to go. So as far as the noise, I know the, the, it's right above our building, it's at the locations that you're in anyways. No one spends that kind of money we do on a facility. Some of the other competition around here, they're not a good place for us. You know, they don't put the money in it, uh, you know, they can be put in 200,000 to a facility, but they don't have the nets. There's noise there, there, and the balls, as, as, as they said, if they hit the net, they're hitting on the surface. You will get a, a ding when they hit with a bat, but it really, you can't really hear it outside of the nets. It's, it's, it's something you feel, in football, like baseball, you know, it's, uh, nothing destroying anybody. We've been in there, and we had no complaints with any of the tenants. They all know what we're doing. They all know what type of business we're going to run, and they're pleased with that, you know, it's just going to be first-class business, not manufacturing and not noisy. And, uh, and as far as the safety going across the street, I'm, I'm happy, as you see, and, you know, we have the lights there, it's very safe. You push the button, and it's right across the street, I'm not concerned about that, because you'll be going with your parents, you know, with father, anybody. Whatever, I think it's a safe place for, uh, the parents who I live, and I think it's a safe background. And I think if you were back on the city, it said, any crimes committed in that background, I don't think there would be any. So it's, it's a safe place, it's a safe place for children.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just make a comment. If this didn't have the party room, this would be approved, and we wouldn't be talking about the sound issues, and that's through a code that was approved by previous Plan Commission, Commission members and previous council members. This is approved under mixed use for the batting cages. We wouldn't be talking about this. So I, personally, I don't think we need to waste our time talking about the soundproofing, that's an owner-tenant issue only. This is about the party room.
Good point. Good point. Anyone else wants, if the public wants to speak? Or just ask a question, up at the podium, please. State your name and address.
Patrick Wilson, uh, 412 Vino Street, and I just wanted to know where the entrance is going to be for, uh, children of the constable.
It's on Maple Street, you know, where the, the part of the building is constructed, glass, that goes all the way out.
So the same entrance where, um, Aldercan, Bureau of Workers' Comp, right?
That's right.
So they're sharing that same part here, right?
Same lottery area, there's 850 parking spaces there.
Okay.
And we're, we're busy when they're not there. You know, I mean, we, we're busy in the afternoons, 25 places, maybe, you know, I mean, most kids go out to school, and they go to, and they go to their parents. And the entrances across the street into the lobby in an elevator, and the stairs will go upstairs.
Okay, all right, that's all. Mike, you next? I, I take you very good with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone heard? Okay. All right, if there is no one else who wish to speak, uh, what, what commission would like to do?
I'll make a motion to the group.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. McLeister?
Yes.
Mr. Volos?
Yes.
Mr. Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Duffase?
Mr. Dowd Hayes.
Yes.
Okay, so it's been approved. Is there any in business from the commission? Okay, I'd like your motion to adjourn.
So?
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.